Good evening, everyone. This is the April 23 meeting of the Revere City Council. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag? Roll call of the members, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Keith.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morbido.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky. Here, Councilor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rizzo. Here, Councilor Rotundo. Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Janino. Here, Quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of April 2, 2018. Madam Clerk? Calendar item number three. Motion presented by Councilor Novoselsky that the city engineer and a member of the Election Commission will appear to discuss the re-signing of property addresses.
Before we go on to the first item on the calendar, I'm going to ask for a moment of personal privilege. We're going to have a moment of silence for the mayor's grandmother that passed away this week, Mary Grasso de Grotola. We're very sorry, and our thoughts and prayers are with him and his family during this difficult time.
Thank you. Calendar item number three. At this time, councilor, will welcome the Election Commissioner out.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, the last meeting, I brought up a motion to have a couple department heads come up and explain some situations. I know there was several people in the city that were denied the right to vote because they put down wrong addresses. Now, one of my biggest things is, I was upset that one of my neighbors got a letter that you cannot, your registration was rejected because you provided an invalid address. As far as that person was concerned, she had a valid address. Now, all of a sudden, we're hearing that addresses were changed. My house was changed from a two-addressed house to a one-addressed house. Since the place was built in the 1800s, it was always two addresses. Now, all of a sudden, the Mass General laws supposedly states that there can only be one address to a property. But what does one do after living in a house for 95 years, having your address changed? Now, all of a sudden, I have people that lived at 51 DeHone Street now have to live at 53 DeHone Street, but the house is still labeled 51. One tenant was denied for 51 DeHone Street and said, "Oh, no, you have to register at 53 DeHone Street." But she doesn't live at 53 DeHone Street, and she knows she has, the lease is 53 DeHone Street, her license is 51 DeHone Street, her cable bills are 51 DeHone Street, her credit cards are 51 DeHone Street, everything, her social security number is 51 DeHone Street. But now, the city wants to make it 53 DeHone Street, and they expect senior citizens to go out and change all their paperwork to match what the city wants to say. I think it's ridiculous. I've offered and stated that the city should be changing their paperwork to accommodate approximately 6,000 to 8,000 people in the city of Revere. That is ridiculous, as far as I'm concerned. 6,000 to 8,000 people have to be moved to change all their paperwork to accommodate the city of Revere. Now, I think those folks should be grandfathered in and allow them even to vote at those addresses instead of going in and telling the folks, even though they live at 51, "Oh, no, I really live at 53." You know, I know they were told, you know, by the Election Commission that that's what they should do. If they showed their license, the license would show 51. So now, they couldn't vote because it would still say that. So these people have to change it. It's wrong. Now, God bless the Election Commissioner. She does a great job. She has her heart in the job. But when someone gets a letter like this saying, "Your registration, your application's been denied," how would you feel? I wouldn't feel very well. Now, when they sent her the letter, the letter, even though she doesn't live at 51 anymore, they sent it to 51 by mail. Same address, 51 DeHone Street, apartment number two. But they said she doesn't live there. How could they mail it? But the post office knows 51 DeHone Street. So, as I was saying, there's almost 4,000 homes in this city that have two addresses that can't use the two addresses, and you have these folks living here for so long having to change everything that they grew up with. Wrong, as far as I'm concerned. I don't care what the Mass General laws say. I think we ought to bypass it and go with what we have now. Let the people keep what they have. And what else do I have to say? Oh, we were never notified of these changes. Big communication issue. I'm a big communicator. Now, allegedly, this program started two years ago. Did any of these councils know this program was going on, this project of changing all the numbers? I didn't. All of a sudden, two years later, because someone caused it, and that's a big thing, they never notified any of these folks that their addresses are going to be changed. It was done, and whenever something happened like this, it pops up and causes havoc, basically, right now in here and there. So, I can't see this. I want to bring, you know, the two parties up that were dealing with this. I think it's wrong, you know, having to make all these people do it. And even if we don't, even if we don't keep the single addresses, how does the voting affect with something like this? You live there, you should vote there. It's still the same building. These people are not lying. They live there. Let them be. So, right now, that's all I have to say. I know there's another councilor that has the same issue, and, you know, I think we ought to address this and learn how to communicate to folks. Let the city know what's going on. Let the city leaders know what's going on. Handled wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. I completely agree with my colleague to my right. The first I heard of this was during our last election. I got a call from one of my closest friends. He says, "I can't vote for you." I said, "What are you talking about?" He says, "They won't register me to vote. I don't live here." This house is over 100 years old. It's been, I don't want to name the address because I don't want to single out the person, but he had to change his address in order to register the vote because he's being told that the address he's known for 70 years, that he's been there, doesn't exist. So, I'll never go on record to say I want to go against federal law because I don't do that. However, I think there should have been a much more vigorous educational process for the citizens, that I, as a city councilor, shouldn't be getting a call from a constituent, let alone one of my best friends, but a constituent saying to me they couldn't register the vote because they had to, they were told their address is not their address, even though it's been their address for 70 years. So, shame on us for not getting out in front of this. I guess this is the beginning of the educational process for this situation here, for the 7,900 people that are going to have to go through this, or however many. My friend has already calculated. I'm sure he knows everybody that's going to be affected by name. But, again, you know, I'm joking, but it's not a laughing matter. This was serious. It is serious, and we really have to approach these things in a different way. And I'm not trying to point fingers at anybody, but this should have been publicly brought to the elected official's attention so we could have helped in getting the word out that, "Don't be alarmed if you get this, if you answer your census and you get rejected, don't be alarmed. You know, you didn't do anything wrong." There's a process that has to be, we have to go through because of some new law. Anyways, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Rotundo.
Through you, Madam Chairman. Diane, may I ask you a few questions? Thank you, ma'am. Sure, I understand. Please be my guest. You're going to have to hit the button. Can I get you a chair for the material?
Sorry. No. I only brought this for demonstration purposes, just to show that we've been maintaining the database. This is only the last eight years. And what it is, is it's copies of records from the Building Department, the city engineer, and addresses that we deleted for no longer in use are just discrepancies. Councilor Zambudo, I had no idea that a constituent of yours had a problem. Had I known, and it was brought to my attention, I would have rectified it. So, I am sorry about that. We did...
No, let me interrupt you for a second. You did rectify it. You sent me, I brought the gentleman in, you sent me down to the city engineer, who explained to him that it couldn't be his address anymore. He reluctantly agreed to change his address so he could register the vote. My point wasn't that, you know, my friend had a problem. That was only an example of what's to happen and what's going on here, and that if my close friend didn't know this because I didn't know it, that's the problem, not, nothing else. You did exactly what you were supposed to do. You met him with me, said, "Go down and see the city engineer." We did, and so forth and so on. But, you know, for the stranger, it's not going to be as easy as it was for my friend because...
Actually, it is, sir. I mean, we will accommodate anyone...
Well, it's as easy. The bottom, that's not what I'm getting at. The bottom line is, the process is flawed. That's my opinion. You can disagree with that, but I think that most reasonable people will say it's flawed. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilor Rotundo, and then we'll go to a general questions.
I do want to respond to Councilor Novoselsky's issues that he brought up. So, when I just...
No, no, if that's all right with you, Madam President?
Yep, please.
If she can respond.
Sure.
She doesn't lose them.
If that's the case, that we don't lose train of thought. If you want to do any responses, and then I'll open it back up to the council to ask additional questions.
We did reject your tenant's registration, and the reason was, the address that she provided of 51 DeHone Street, when we checked the assessor's database, as is standard operating procedure, we checked the assessor's database, and we didn't find that address in their database. And they're the governing, they're the main address file that we check. So, we did reject it, but what we also did was, upon receipt of you, once you contacted us, we pulled all of the registrations that we rejected, and we registered the voters, and we worked with the Secretary of State's office on this. I did go back to 1927 to pull the paperwork on your address, and it did say 53 DeHone Street. So, we really didn't want to put an erroneous address in the system if it didn't exist in the assessor's database. We were just trying to maintain consistency. The post office, as well as the fire department, the police department, is basically under the understanding that every home should have one address, and it should be numbered as 53 DeHone Street, apartment 1234. So, I do apologize for the way, I didn't understand, I didn't realize that it was going to have such an impact. We thought, when we sent the letters, that the people would contact us. We didn't realize that they would go right to the councilors with this. As they come up, we are dealing with them on an individual basis, and it's a really big problem throughout the city, and the engineer can, you know, back me up on this. We try to maintain consistency because, I apologize, one second. The Revere Fire Department, based on street knowledge, is updated by engineering. If numbers are off, it could delay response time. Prefer one number per building. The Revere Police Department used their own database, is updated by engineering. It's a big issue when house numbers are out of order or no number on house, response time is affected. It just goes on. The U.S. Post Office, they work under the philosophy that you have one house, one address, and we are doing the research. It is, you know, it is said here that we're putting the burden on the resident, the amount of time that it takes us to locate a valid address. We had a gentleman today where his, you know, there are many buildings where the front of the house has one address, and the back of the house has another address. I mean, there are a lot of discrepancies in the system, and we're just trying to correct them so that we have one consistent database from which to work with. I would be happy to work with you folks any way that you see fit, but I would, if you'd like, the engineer can come up and also address some of these issues that we're finding. And we do have, I do have it all documented, spreadsheets, of invalid addresses, addresses not in the Patriot assessor's database. It's just all well documented, that we're just trying to maintain a consistent database.
Madam President, do you wish to speak? Please.
Thank you. The only issue I have is, number one, the post office has been delivering to 51 DeHone Street on a regular basis. Someone says 51, the house says 51, the mailbox says 51, and they put the mail in 51. So, it's obviously that they don't agree with this. Second of all, I have two neighbors at 51 DeHone Street. One was rejected, and one, in the books, still lives at 51 DeHone Street on your records. And she was never offered a change of address, and that should have happened right away, not three weeks later.
Well, as soon as we heard that you wanted to have this meeting, I didn't mail anything to anyone, with the exception of one of the tenants. We registered her to vote and sent her all the information.
Unfortunately, you know, this tenant didn't just come to the city council. They came to the landlord, the house owner, who happens to be me. So, you know, you got double barrels.
Had I processed that registration, I would have called you. And I'm sorry you got blindsided by that. I wished I had just called you and said, "Ira, you know, gee, dah 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 dah." So, I am sorry about that. I do apologize.
But we are going to have to adjust the apartment numbers because you assigned to her the wrong number.
We would be more than happy to work with you on that. I hope I addressed all of your questions. I don't think I have, but...
Diane, and Nick, the biggest thing that bothers me is that there was no communication. That's the biggest. It was a surprise. It hit us everybody hard, saying, "I've been living here, you know, I've been living there for 71 years. I know 51 DeHone Street." And now, all of a sudden, it doesn't exist.
So, I just want to clarify, we didn't implement a specific project to try to revamp, you know, the addresses. Typically, I handle them just as, there's so many that have problems in, you know, many different ways. We try to deal with them as they come across our desks. And so, it turns out that the Elections Department ended up being a good vehicle for that because they are looking at them on a regular basis, and we can try to address them as they come in. Aside from the elections, there is other reasons why, you know, correct addressing, you know, is important. What we do when someone, you know, comes in and there's a discrepancy, if we can, we try to correct it so that it impacts them the least. In some cases, you know, people are kind of stuck in the middle, and they don't, they end up with more of an inconvenience than others. So, if they're using an address that we don't necessarily have on record, but is one that, if it was on record, it didn't affect anybody else, I don't have any problem, you know, addressing them that way. But there are other things that come out of the addresses being corrected, which I see a lot of that's unrelated to the elections. People will come in when they are trying to refinance, and the bank won't refinance because the addresses don't match. Sometimes, along those same lines, if there's a transfer of property, same thing, they have issues with financing or the legal transfer because the addresses, there's a discrepancy. Then, we also see issues with people's utility accounts, National Grid and Verizon, where somebody might say, "Hey, you know, they won't give me service because my address is not in their system because there's a discrepancy." And then also, city services. So, sometimes people end up getting other people's bills. Sometimes people end up getting fines from their neighbor because the addresses are, you know, overlapping or there's some type of an issue. So, there's other, you know, problems other than, or other impacts other than elections that surround the, you know, the correction, if you will, of the addresses. And so, I just want to make sure that, you know, neither myself nor Diane, you know, decided that we were going to try to revamp everything at once because there's so much. I think that, you know, we were using the elections sort of as a trigger, and I think that had more of an impact because of the voting, you know, the ramifications around voting and whatnot. So, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that was clear, that, you know, there's not like a set project, so to speak.
Nick, you know, if I went down to Building Department, as a matter of fact, we were down there several months ago, in January, and we had to get building permits. They gave it to us from 51 DeHone Street. So, it's not consistent.
That's a problem, I think, right. So, that's part of the issue, is to try to make things uniform and consistent because there's different data in different parts of the city. And you'll see that as the new e-permitting comes along, you're going to end up with just one address, and if you try to put in the other one, it won't let you. So, you know, part of that also is the, you know, sort of, the tendency towards electronic systems that we're kind of going into. And, you know, the CitizenServe, which is the e-permitting platform, is a good example of that. There's some times where people will say, "I can't pull a permit because there's no address. My address isn't in there." And that's one of the ones where the discrepancy is that the mailing address that they're using isn't the one that we have on record. And so, you know, we end up trying to, you know, scramble a little bit to correct it so that they can do whatever it is that they want to do. And like I said, again, that goes through other departments too, like the Health Department with fines and things like that. So, there's a lot of impact of the addresses, you know, being not correct in some cases. And some people, it impacts them more than others, unfortunately.
Thank you. You're welcome.
So, if I may, before we open this up to the council, I think that this is a little bit more in-depth conversation than we had anticipated for this. I recommend that we do put it in committee because it seems like every councilor here has a question on it. We are on calendar item number one, and we're about 40 minutes into our meeting. So, I'm going to open it up to the council. I'll start at this end and work our way down. But I do recommend that we put this in committee for a lengthier discussion because I don't think we're going to get this resolved anytime soon.
Can I at least have my turn? Thank you. Through you, Madam Chairwoman, Nick, who was the brainchild of this?
Of the address correcting? So, I have been correcting the addresses since I got here, just as they come.
So, the 8,000 addresses, is that correct?
So, I'm not sure that there's 8,000. There's a significant amount.
How many?
I don't think anybody has quantified it, but there is a significant amount.
So, I do got to say this. So, from 1915 to 2017, firefighters haven't had a problem going to houses, police nor that either. The Building Department has been writing permits since God knows how long, and people have been getting their loans. In fact, most loans are derived off of the assessor sheet. So, people predominantly haven't had that great of a problem. In fact, probably, I would say 99.9% haven't. That's probably the number. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's 98%. So, now, we come to this issue where you're just thrusting it on a group of people, and I'm just wondering, does this conflict with the 1993 National Voter Registration Act, in particular, Section 3 and 5? Because once you're telling them that they don't live at the address that their motor vehicle is registered from, you've now infringed upon their right, based upon the Motor Vehicle Act, which is part of the 1993 Act, that says that they don't live there. Now, you've infringed upon their ability to vote. How do you rectify that?
So, I don't think that anybody has been denied the right to vote.
We just had two people who said that they've had a problem.
No, I think you're right.
And I know that there are several people that I can speak to, two of them Hispanic people, that were not given the opportunity to vote down in Shirley Avenue, actually down at Garfield.
Okay. I haven't heard of anyone...
I know. They were told to go up and speak to you.
Okay, so, anytime anyone brings a problem to my attention, I will address it.
I know you do.
I have not heard of that. As far as the National Voter Registration Act, I checked with the Secretary of State's office, and they said, "We just have to maintain a database. They can't direct us or tell us how to maintain it. It's up to us to maintain the database." Now, we, a study was done, and they said they were...
Right, that's Section 6, which it states that the state has the opportunity and the right to do so. And the application process under Section 9 states that. However, you have to be compliant with 5, and you're not.
Well, yeah. Everything that I've done...
You just said his address was incorrect at 51.
Okay, George, everything that I've done has gone through review from the Secretary of State's office. I don't do anything without their approval. A study was done, and it was learned that there were about 6,000 invalid addresses in the city of Revere. When we were going through this process internally, it was known that we were having a problem with invalid addresses. We came to a resolution that seems to work. Now, out of the many, many that we've corrected, we know of three people that are unhappy. Ivan Novoselsky, Councilor Zambudo, and then there's another woman here, Lorna King. So, we have three. We're running on a pretty good record, and we're finding, we even had one neighbor paying for another neighbor's tax bill because their address was invalid. I mean, this is a really big problem, George. And as far as mortgages, Nick has to correct many loan documents because their house has the wrong house number on it. And people do get a quarterly tax bill that they should be checking to make sure that they have the right number on their house as per their tax bill.
It's funny, this is the first year we're all hearing about this.
And I don't know why that is, because we've been, I mean, this is only eight years, George. This is eight years. Now, the problem is because a lot of people are registering online. We could get up to 50, 60 registrations in a day. So, because of there's so much technology out there, there's a lot, and it's easily accessible, a lot more people are registering to vote.
So, do you tell them to correct their address when they do the motor vehicle registration?
Yes. Yes. When it comes through from the RMV or an online voter registration, the burden for us to locate the address is, it takes us countless hours to find addresses half the time. We go, first, we go through the assessor's database. Okay, so, it's not there. Let's check the Building Department. Let's check the Google. We use Google Maps all the time. And then, if we, then we go to Nick because we know how busy, you know, he's really very busy, so we try not to bother him. But then, when we absolutely just can't figure it out, Nick will direct us.
And we can't figure out the eight names on a mailbox in the city.
I don't know. Our return mail, just from invalid addresses, the return mail is crazy. There has to be some consistency with this process.
There has to be a lot of consistency, and it doesn't take place.
But, George, we shouldn't counsel, we shouldn't have different apartments with different direct addresses. My database should not have a different address than the assessor's database. So, you know, we're trying to do the right thing, and maybe it just...
And the Building Department should have the correct information as well, and when they don't, the people are the ones that suffer. And so, by doing this, people are going to suffer because of having the incorrect...
No, people won't suffer from my department because anything that comes up, we'll be more than happy to handle it and work with the person on it. I can only speak for me. Sorry, thank you, but...
Again, councilors, I'll reiterate that I think that...
Again, councillors, I'll reiterate that I think that we're touching the tip of an iceberg of a much larger issue. This is affecting upwards of 6,000 residents, that's a decent percentage of our population. So I think, you know, a 20-minute conversation isn't going to fix this. And we can have a great feel-good conversation about it, Councilor Zambudo's favorite term, but I think we can accomplish something if we put it into a committee, tear it apart, get all of the department heads that are affected by it, because it's not just the Election Commission. This is affecting people in more ways than I was aware of, and I think we need to address it because clearly no one else is.
And we need one single, we need one single database that everything is derived from.
That's the assessors database.
Say again, ma'am?
It should be corrected.
And it, and correct, it should be corrected.
Before it was put into the computer?
Ma'am, if you're going to speak, you just have to come up to the mic and state your name and address for the record.
So before this was launched, it should have been, it should have been corrected before it was launched, is what you're saying?
It should have been corrected a long time ago. My name is Lorna King, I live at 81 Malden Street. I have always lived at 81, that is the address.
Yep.
It is a duplex house, it has two separate entrances, you cannot access my apartment from 83 Malden Street. There's a reason, we were told we had to put two numbers.
By the Building Department.
We had to have it clearly listed. Back in the 90s, apparently, before it went into the computers in the assessors office, the house was listed as 8183 Malden Street. Goes way back to the Civil War days. It was the only house on the street. It's always had two doors, it's always had two numbers. It is not marked wrong. What is wrong is when the information went into the assessors database, which Diane is using, I understand, but when it went into the assessors database, it was told they had to put one number. This is back in the 90s, so I don't know what happened in the last two years or this act that you're talking about, I don't know of any city statute or ordinance that says you can only have one number on a house. All I know is before it went into the computer, which means a human being listed information into that database, and they put it down as 83 Malden Street because that's the owner's address. That was where my mother and father lived and they owned the house at the time. It is wrong. I say someone should go into the assessors database and correct the houses that are not marked wrong. I understand some are in the city, but not all of them are. If it's a duplex, it deserves to have its two numbers the way it always was, that's what it was assigned. It was not wrong. What's wrong is that they changed it to one number. And I'd like to see someone show me that you cannot have two numbers on a house. There is a reason for it, and that's all I have to say.
Madam Chairwoman, I just want to conclude my comments with saying, is there a possibility in, I respect your work, and please don't take it, where we can get the Building Department, the assessors, and anybody else to work collectively on this issue because you're going to find two sets of numbers from the Building Department versus that of the assessors' office, they're going to be incongruent. And I would suspect, and I would say, that the numbers from the Building Department, because they have probably better documentation for longevity purposes, is going to be the one that's more knowledgeable as to when a property was built. That's been my, my understanding. It could be wrong, but I would suggest as much information you can get together and streamline, I would do it, and I would even say that we should solicit the mayor to provide as much funding for you guys to do it so that it's done once and for all, because as you point out, the e-commerce is where we're headed to do it. If we don't put the right information in, we're never going to have a perfect system.
So I. Madam President, Madam President, if I may, I, you know, and I, you know, the city engineers, you know, I know, you know, he, you know, he wants to respond to Council Rotundo, but I don't know if it's your intention to go all the way down and discuss this. I think you had mentioned a subcommittee meeting.
Yes.
I would, I would like to just ask that if it's okay with the rest of the council, after, after he responds to Council Rotundo, maybe we have a separate subcommittee meeting on this, we can move on.
Yes, absolutely.
I think that would be, you know.
I think, like I said, we're touching the tip of an iceberg of a really big issue and we don't have all the people we need here to answer it. I think we need the assessors' office here, I think we need someone from the city solicitor's office here, and any other department heads that this is affecting that we can brainstorm because no resident should ever feel that amount of stress over their home address. That's a shame. And again, I think it's something that I'm glad Council Novoselsky brought to the forefront, but we need to address it and it's not going to be addressed in an hour, it's not going to be addressed in two hours. It's something that we really need to figure out and get all the right people there so we can move on and let these people move on with their lives because it's unacceptable.
Madam President, just one quick thing.
Councillor.
When we have that meeting and you invite all the people, make sure that Patriot Property is there, because I'll bet they're the culprits.
All right, if there's, I'll let you respond, we'll send it to Legislative Affairs.
Quickly, I don't think, I don't see there's a problem with every, you know, anybody that's involved, you know, or that's affected, you know, being involved in a solution, so I don't see a problem with that. I definitely agree also with there being a central, correct database that everything's derived from. So I think that in that case, you know, we're on the same page, so.
And I think it'll make your lives easier too in the long run, so you're not walking around, you know, going to this department to cross-reference this department to then check with this, it's, it's complete insanity. It's, you know, 2018, we have so much technology that could be helping us manage that and we really need to. So I'm going to send this to Legislative Affairs and Councilor Zambudo can take it up in his committee and the clerk will notify all the department heads that need to be present so we can address this because it's definitely long overdue. Thank you. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask for a suspension of rules. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered? I'd like to take up calendar items 21, 22, and 23.
Calendar item number 21, communication from the mayor relative to departmental revolving funds.
Yes, if I may, the reason this is being done, the Modernization Act that was passed in 2016 in order to streamline government procedures, which it has, requires that once, only once, instead of yearly, the revolving funds for each department be approved by the, be recommended by the city, the mayor, to the city council be approved. And you have here a list of various departmental revolving funds and it's an up-to amount, so it should not exceed, the revolving funds will not exceed that amount. So if you look at it, I think it's self-explanatory, the amounts that are being, being put in there. And this is from revenues that are coming into the department and put aside for, they can use on expenditures that may be incurred by that department. Rather than being appropriated, it comes from the revolving fund account. This is something that's been done over the years, however, now with the, this is the first time that we've addressed it through the Modernization Act, which is a one-time only deal. So rather than doing it on a yearly basis, it's being done once a year and you have the communication that explains that.
Thank you. So this will be ordered to a public hearing, but at this time, are there any councillors that have any questions? Seeing and hearing none, this will be ordered to a public hearing on May 7.
Calendar item number 22, communication from the Director of Finance relative to the parity salary change for Schedule J.
If I may, this is, Unit A has, which is the final, A and B of the City Hall units, union units. It has been passed and signed and agreed on by the, the union members. It's been signed by the mayor and by the union representatives and the union itself. I have a copy attached to the communications, both the, for Unit A, and you can see exactly what they're looking at. But this is for, just a parity and it's only for those people who don't represent in the unions to see that they get the same. So that's what that is.
Thank you, George. This will also be going to a public hearing on May 7. Anyone have any questions? Seeing and hearing none, we'll order that to a public hearing.
Calendar item number 23, communication from the Director of Finance relative to the Unit A memorandum of agreement.
Again, this is the circumstance again where the Unit A, which is the department union, has signed an agreement after being negotiated. The unions accepted it and the union representative has accepted it and the administration has accepted it, so it's before you. The terms of the agreement are simple, it's 1%, 2%, and 3% starting July 15, and then there's a $500 increase in, on June, July 1, 2018. So with that, it's the same as the Unit B contract and it just needs the approval for the appropriation.
Any councillors have any questions? This will be going to a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Shall the City Council approve the appropriation necessary to fund the Unit A memorandum of agreement? Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the Unit A appropriation has been approved.
Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. And while we're under suspension, I'm going to ask that Councilor Rizzo take up calendar item number 5, his committee report, while Mr. Anzoni's before us still.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Tonight, the Ways and Means Committee met on five separate issues, and I'll take them one at a time. The first one was 18-047, it was a motion presented by Council Rotundo that the city of Revere look into the feasibility of building a new Revere High School in the Coolidge Street projects while simultaneously building apartment-style housing for current and future residents. The committee, while recognizing Council Rotundo's intent, trying to find an appropriate location where we're obviously desperately short on available land to build a building such as a high school, it was brought to the Board of Directors by the Executive Director at Revere Housing, voted down unanimously for several reasons. One was the mandate that it would have to relocate 286 families and the cost to the city outside of whatever the school would cost would be $115 million. So, I mean, obviously, it was not something that we could entertain and the committee unanimously voted to place on file. So I don't know if the, if the clerk wants to call the roll to place on file or you can just gavel it through to place on file.
We can just place it on file. Place it on file.
Thank you, Madam President. Next order of business was a motion by Council Morabito, 18-061. It had to do with the veterans' tax abatement. Rather than read the whole proposal, essentially what it does is it would, it would give the ability for veterans of certain criteria to work off a number of hours up to $1,000 off of their property tax bill. So what, what the vote would do is it would, it would allow us to accept this particular legislation and then an ordinance would have to be subsequently drafted and sent to a public hearing where we could, you know, determine the details of it. But this would be to accept the legislation as described in the motion.
Roll call on the acceptance of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5N, relative to the Veterans Tax Abatement Work Off Program. Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the motion has been approved.
Madam President, the next order of business was 18-097, motion pertaining to the DPW facility loan order. After much discussion, it was decided that we would at least send this to a public hearing, approving option one, which would be the immediate and most expedient reconstruction or building of a new DPW facility. The number associated with that was 22.5 million, although it is the wish of the committee to, prior to any vote for any amount of money, that we hear from and discuss where the number of 22.5 million dollars came from, from Weston and Sampson, who put these numbers together in conjunction with the Superintendent of Public Works and any other associated parties who put this estimate together. It was the feeling of at least some members of the committee that 22.5 million dollars seemed excessive for a building that was just going to house equipment and offices for certain members of the department. And so before we vote the 22.5 million dollars, we want to, we want to have a better understanding of where those numbers are coming from. So while this is going to go to a public hearing, we are not condoning or suggesting that the 22.5 million dollars will be the final figure. So this vote will just be to put this to a public hearing, option number one. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This will be ordered to a public hearing on May 21.
Madam President, next order of business was 18-098. It's in regards to the DCR Maintenance Facility Loan Order of $11 million. The council unanimously voted to approve this loan order. The loan order, just for the edification of councillors that may have not been here or may not fully recognize the significance of this, this was a contractual obligation that the city entered into back about 17 years ago with the DCR. We essentially swapped land and land has been sold that is now sitting in an account with the city, almost $5 million right now to help pay towards this 11 million. There's also tax revenues that have been derived by the city from this DCR property. Right now, it's about $1 million and a half dollars a year. And so, again, this is an obligation that the city has. It essentially is really not costing the city money, it's actually earning the city money. But we do have to relocate this DCR Maintenance Facility in order to keep in compliance with the agreement that we had originally made. So it was voted unanimously to approve the loan order and I would ask for a roll call.
Roll call.
Shall the City Council approve a loan order in the amounts of $11 million for the construction of the DCR Maintenance Facility? Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved.
And Madam President, the final order of business that we discussed at the earlier meeting is 18-099, feasibility study loan order of $50,000 to refurbish or rebuild the Point of Pines Fire Station. Again, that was unanimously approved by the committee to authorize the $50,000 for a feasibility study. We recognize there's going to be further discussion down the road once we get the study back and, you know, it is going to center around a number of things, whether it's adequate space or manpower or a number of other things that councils had some concerns with. But for the time being, the $50,000 loan order was unanimously approved by the subcommittee.
Roll call?
Shall the City Council approve a loan order in the amounts of $50,000 for the Point of Pines Fire Station reconstruction feasibility study? Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes that. We'll return to the regular order of business.
Calendar item number four, public hearings. Hearing call is ordered on an ordinance amending the water and sewer ordinances of the city of Revere.
Any proponents here this evening?
I'd like to be listed as a proponent. My name is George Anzoni, Director of Finance for the city of Revere, 281 Broadway, Revere, Mass. The reason these, the reason there's a request for these ordinance changes is because during the last four years, we've been installing a new AMR water meter reading system. It's done through the radio waves and so that it's not necessary for a reader to come to your, to your home or a place of business. to your home or a place of business. However, there were certain areas that had problems, and there were certain places and people that have given us problems. We had to replace, we have to replace, we had to replace the beginning, eleven thousand, I think it was, five-hundred-and-seventy-nine water meters throughout the city. It's been a long, arduous process. A number of times, we weren't allowed into the home or the place of business, which caused a delay in the project. And what we're looking for, what these ordinances will do, is put a fine on those people who won't let us get in and measure the amount of water they're using. This is now a twenty-five-million-dollar water enterprise system. It's a twenty-five-million-dollar business. This allows us, the city, to record every bit of water that's expended or utilized in the City of Revere. So, we're looking for this under a, we were looking, first of all, that the fine would be under twenty-one D. However, twenty-one D is an arduous project. We did that for housing at one point, but there was no really ramification from that. As we asked for previously, we asked for a special legislation to be enacted so that, which has been forwarded to the legislature, so that it would fall under what they call the FODU program. And that FODU program would escalate the amount of fines on a daily basis for those who do not care to cooperate with the city. So, having that, it also will then go into the tax bill, and we have a right of recouping that amount of money. We have walked into homes, and they have their water meter in cement. So, it's their responsibility to take that out of their cement and place it in an area that is accessible to the city. The city should have a right at any time to ring somebody's doorbell and say, if there's a suspicion of, if there's a suspicion of somebody improperly using their water or not metering it correctly, they should be allowed to enter the home so that we can take a look at the meter and make sure it's working properly. However, it is to the benefit of the water users in the city to have these new meters in place. And the reason being is because once we get it in place, once we get the system up and working a hundred percent, we'll be able to look at the reads that come in, see if somebody has a leak, notify the people that have a leak, and say, you have to do something about this before it becomes an expensive proposition. We've done that in a few areas, but we haven't gotten to that point yet. So, we're looking for these ordinances to, again, not only for the meter installation, but future operation of the water program, water and sewer program. And it'll make it much more easy for the city to enforce what needs to be enforced when people decide they don't want to follow the law or respond to the city correctly. So, that's all we're looking for. We're not looking to punish anybody. We're not looking to do that. What we're looking to do is make it so this can run as a business, and we have enforcement rights in order to get what we need from the citizens. We have lowered the amount, because of this water meter systems, we've lowered the amount of estimates from eighteen hundred down to maybe fifty in a water billing cycle of eleven thousand bills. So, looking at that, you know, the program is working, and it's doing very well, but we need this last push in order to get the, all the meters in place. So, that's what we're looking for, this to happen. And I think that in June or July of this year, or May or June of this year, I'll be putting up an extension of the contract, once these are passed, an extension of the contract for the water meter installers and for the other areas that need to be done, because it's taken so long to get this done. And this is the usual circumstance for water meter installations throughout the Commonwealth. However, we found that these ordinances work in other cities and towns, so we're looking for them to work here in the City of Revere. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents here this evening? Any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents here this evening? Any opponents? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side of the hearing. Any councilors wishing to speak on this? No? Is it the will of the council for this to go to committee, or would you like to vote on it this evening?
(inaudible).
You know what? I think it has to stick in committee, and then, how many days, Madam Clerk?
You can't vote in an ordinance the same night that it's been introduced, so it'll have to go to committee.
So, it'll go to committee, and then it can be voted out for the meeting on the seventh? Is that adequate?
If Councilor Zambudo would like to hold a committee meeting on the seventh.
So, just let us know. Yeah? Okay, this will be sent to Legislative Affairs. Item number five, which brings us to...
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you. Appointments?
Appointment Subcommittee Report.
Councilor Guanasso.
Thank you, Madam President. It's a pleasure to speak with you. Earlier this afternoon, the Appointment Subcommittee met, and we had several items before us, and they were all reappointments. I will read the list as they appeared and ask, if you don't mind, that everyone was in, most councilors were in attendance, that we vote them out all favorably, as they were voted out favorably by the Subcommittee. I'll read them as follows. Eighteen dash one-twenty-seven, reapportment of Mercurio Brothers as a licensed drain layer. Eighteen one-twenty-eight, Procopio is held, they did not appear. Eighteen one-twenty-nine, reapportment of J.J. O'Brien as a licensed drain layer. Eighteen one-thirty, reapportment of Caruso Corporation as a licensed drain layer. Eighteen one-thirty-one, reapportment of J. Marchesian Sons as a licensed drain layer. Eighteen one-thirty-four, reapportment of Raphael Construction, they do not appear, and that will also be held. Eighteen one-thirty-five, reapportment of Arm Construction as a licensed drain layer. And eighteen one-thirty-seven, reapportment of J&amp;A Contracting Services as a licensed drain layer. Finally, eighteen one-thirty-nine, reapportment of Menino Construction was held, because they did not appear. I ask that the council hold a vote, so favorably, and I thank you for voting in favor.
On the appointments as voted by Councilor Guanasso's committee. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Calendar Item Number eighteen, Communication from the Mayor relative to the reapportment of Menino Construction. That item was taken up during the Subcommittee Report. Calendar Item Number nineteen, Communication from the Mayor relative to an ordinance further amending the zoning ordinances of the City of Revere.
If any councilors have any questions? If not, this will be going to a public hearing on May twenty-first. So, it'll go to a public hearing on the twenty-first.
Calendar Item Number twenty, Communication from Christine Thomas, RBP Hotel LLC, two forty-five Revere Beach Parkway, requesting a modification of PUD sixteen dash oh one relative to the hotel as follows. One-hundred-and-thirty-two rooms to one-hundred-and-sixty rooms, parking ratio reduction from point five to point four-three-eight, and reduction in the front yard setback from twenty foot, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty feet to twelve feet, four inches.
Good evening, Christine Thomas, RPB Hotel LLC, that I provided a detailed letter regarding what this request is. Would it be useful for me to read that letter, or have you all read it, and would you like me to paraphrase?
I believe we all received a copy and read the letter, so if you just want to give a very brief summary to the council, and then we'll open it up to questions.
Okay, great. That we were permitted for one-hundred-and-thirty-two rooms, that by expanding the project by twenty-one feet and reducing the number of extended stay rooms, we can create a dual-branded hotel. And this was not an opportunity that was open to us at the time that the original project was permitted for the PUD. This is the direction of the hospitality industry, because it's very efficient. It shares one common space and two separate brands, so it puts less of a drain on reservation systems, and can be a much more energetic, robust property as a result of that. That we think that this is good for the project, and good for the town, and good for the neighborhood, and anxious to hear any questions that you might have about the concept, or about the changes that we're requesting, or any other thoughts. Thanks.
Perfect, thank you. At this time, we'll open it up to the council. Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Madam President. Christine, hello.
Hello.
I have, first of all, I want to say that I was put on this letter as we interviewed, but I really didn't interview with you. I wasn't available at that time, so I'm on the letter, and I didn't really sit with you and talk. So, I'd like my name removed from that, since we didn't sit down together and have, you know, and converse.
I want to be clear that that was not in my letter to the City Council. In my letter to the City Council, I did meet with the Beachmont Improvement Committee. And so, I'm sorry for that inaccuracy in the letter of support from the city.
That's okay. I just have a couple of questions. I read the letter, and I know when we first met a couple of years ago, Gate Residential said that they would take care of the creek and maintain it. They couldn't do much with it, but they would clean it out, put some shrubbery or whatever they could that was, you know, that coexists with the creek, and they said that they would maintain it. You say in your letter that you want to put a fence around it and just close it off, so it won't be a dumping area for people. I'm wondering, is that true?
That request was made of us. Would we consider doing that? And we're happy to do that, because it was apparently an area that was easy pickings for...
Yes, we talked about this. I'm surprised you haven't found any dead bodies in there. But other than that, would it be closed off to the neighborhood in back of that? So, would a fence go in back where the neighborhood is, where Standis Road, is it Standis Road?
Standish. It's not our intention to block. It just goes around the corner to...
If I may, Madam President, just to review to Council McKenna, this was a request of the neighbors next to the Sunoco Station. And they didn't want a lot of cars coming by there, stopping and dumping things over the God real, it's there now, and they requested a fence. So, that fence is going to go from the edge of Elliott Road around North Shore Road onto the parkway and tie into Gate Residential Fence.
Okay. My whole point of this is that you agreed to maintain this creek with the fence along the line of your property. Now, will you still maintain if there's dumping in there, or, you know, will you still maintain the creek and what's around it?
We will still live up to the commitments that we made in the original permits, for sure.
Okay, and that's all I need to know. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. I did review the new proposals, and I know that you had spoken at length about it. You know, I'm one that seems to be pretty happy with, you know, added rooms in the city, especially hotel rooms. There's going to be added revenue to the city. Just recently, we had the Boston Marathon, and that Saturday night prior, I was driving home from work around ten-thirty at night, and I saw a group of people with marathon jackets on Broadway, Revere. And I actually pulled on, I said, you run the marathon? They said, yes. I said, where are you coming from? They said, they're coming from down in Virginia. I said, where are you staying? They said, here, we're looking for a nice restaurant to dine in, and they were right on Broadway. So, it was nice to see people from, coming from Virginia to run the marathon, staying in hotels in Revere. And we obviously need more of them, because the City of Boston keeps getting bigger, and conventions are great. PAX East just came into town, and they had over five-hundred-thousand visitors, they said, to the area for PAX East Weekend, which is kind of a gamer convention, which is pretty nuts. But I'm always in favor of adding more hotel rooms to the city. And one of the big concerns that we had when this proposal first went through was a lot of residents were upset about the quote-unquote extended stays. This new proposal reduces the extended stays, although I stay in extended stays when I travel. They're more of just a suite. I like to have more space. It's not a place that I go to live. And I understand that there are different versions and tiers of extended stays. You know, there's Amerisuit's, which is probably not the ones I would stay at, and then there's the Marriott Extended Stay, which is a lot nicer. So, I'm happy that you were able to reduce it, because I think it gives neighbors a little bit more peace of mind of who would be staying in them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilors? Councilor Rizzo?
Yes, Madam President. I just have a fundamental problem with moving the goalposts as we go along. You know, developers come before us of all types, they ask for something, and then they come back for something more and something more. You know, I mean, we have our inspectional services people kicking doors in of little old ladies, because they have a stove and a sink in their basements. But now, we're talking about, you know, adding hotel rooms, taking off eight, you know, adding or reducing eight feet of setbacks, reducing the number of parking spaces. And what we do to our own residents that live with any project that comes here, not just your project, but projects across the city, projects along the beach, projects that will be coming soon, to whether it be Suffolk Downs or Wonderland, you know, and one of the things that I've always been very concerned about, and I've heard loud and clear from residents across the city, is that they're here twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. With all due respect to Councilor Keith and people with marathon jackets coming from Virginia, I don't represent them. I represent the people that are here every single day, fighting traffic wherever they go across the city. So, as much as the extra tax dollars that we'll get from another thirty rooms is great, I mean, it's great from a financial standpoint, you want more revenue that you can generate, but what does that cost in terms of quality of life for neighbors? That is just what I have swirling around in my head. Now, I don't know if this can be done with the same amount of setback that was originally authorized when you came before the City Council, and maybe that means, well, you know, we can still split the hotel, the concept, but keep the same amount of rooms, and maybe not need the setback and not need the, you know, the reduction in parking. You know, because I just think, I've seen it time and again, and again, this is no disrespect to you or your company, but I've seen it time and again with projects that happen across the city, that, you know, you get promised X, Y, and Z, but at the end of it, you don't necessarily get X, Y, and Z. And I'm just concerned, this message that we're sending, you know, geez, we're going to add rooms, and such a great concept, but by the way, we only need, we only want a twelve-foot setback, not a twenty-foot setback. If you were to say that to somebody with an eight-thousand-square-foot parcel of land in my neighborhood, that we're going, that, you know, by the way, you're not going to meet the setback, guess what? They're not going to get it, because they don't have the setback. And so, what we continuously do as a City Council, or what it seems like we do, is when somebody comes before that, you know, and listen, we're all for economics here. We all want to see money flowing into the city. But at the end of the day, in my book anyway, this isn't a race to see how many people we can bring into the City of Revere. This is how do we maintain a good quality of life of people and grow our community in a responsible way, and actually do it in a way that's fair, that's fair to all of our existing residents. And I'm just questioning whether or not it's fair to say to a developer that came in with a plan a year, two years ago, and now coming back and saying, oh, no, this really isn't good, we want this, and now we want this, and how that makes a regular nine-to-five Revere resident feel, when they come before, whether it be the Licensing Board, or the Zoning Board of Appeals, or the City Council, and gets the, you know, spit kicked out of them, you know? They get, you know, you should be doing this, and you should be doing that. I'm not saying that I'm going to be for or against it, and I don't know if, you know, if it's the intention of the council to vote tonight, but I just have serious reservations when this happens, and again, I'm not singling you out, although you're here before the podium tonight, but it happens time and again with developments that go on in the city, and I think it's a slippery slope that the city is going down if we keep doing it. We have an apartment building on Ocean Avenue right now. building on Ocean Avenue right now that started off as 50 units. Then it went to 60 units. Now it's 75 units. There's not enough parking down there. This is all going to trickle down to people who live in these areas. And so, you know, when I hear, when I hear stuff like this going on, I'm only one member of this city council, but I'll be one member that's going to fight to try to maintain a certain quality of life for people. It's not always the dollar, in my opinion, that has to drive a vote from a city council or an executive order from the mayor's office. It has to be what is good for our city, you know? And, you know, it has to be, I mean, it has to be win-win. It can't be win-lose, you know? And then, you know, how do you determine that win-win? Well, I don't know. I, you know, I don't determine it strictly with dollars and cents. I determine it, good for the developer because, of course, you wouldn't propose it. But good for us means it's good for the neighbors. It's good for the city. So I just wanted to pass that along, Madam President. Those are my feelings. Again, it's no reflection on the developers whatsoever. It's a reflection on where I think the city is going and how we're operating as a city and what I think we need to be looking at. Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have a response?
Just one point of clarification.
You just have to...
Bob O'Brien, Director of Economic Development for the city. And we did, as you know, Counselor, submit a lot of support for this change. With regard to the setback in particular, it should be noted that they are not looking for an additional setback. The building is extended by 21 feet and the setback, which was previously approved under the PUD, would apply also to that additional 21 feet. That original setback was at variance with the zoning. But there is, the building just continues to run on the same perimeter. So it's really not an additional setback.
So you're expanding the footprint, but they've already been granted a variance to only have a 12-foot setback?
No, no. They, yes, that's correct, under the PUD.
Then it's a change in the building.
It's a change in the length of the building. And in fact, they add four parking spaces to what otherwise would have been there. But it is not an additional setback.
Well, they add four parking spaces, but they're reducing the number of parking spaces that normally would be required.
Yes, I do agree. I would say one other thing, however. The new guidelines for calculating required parking have changed recently. And the guidelines that were initially calculated for this project as a whole have now been reduced because of the changes in parking element.
Well, Bob, the only thing I would say, and I respect your opinion, and, you know, I've known you for quite a while. But these reductions that have been scientifically proved don't seem to be working across neighborhoods in Revere because if you, I mean, people are having difficulty in parking all across this city. So you could talk to me all night long till you're blue in the face, but no one's going to convince me that lowering the requirements on the number of vehicles that we can park is a good thing for our city. Can't buy it. I just don't buy it.
Okay, understood. With regard, however, to the setback, be clear, they're not looking for anything beyond what was already approved by the city council in the PUD.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Rotendo?
Thank you. Through you, Madam President. If there's no need to get an approval, then what are they here for? I mean, if there was no change in the environment, then they shouldn't be here. I mean, no, no, seriously. That's the essence of it. No, it isn't ridiculous.
The proponent went to the Zoning Board of Appeal to present...
Because you're asking a change, you're asking a change.
And the Zoning Board of Appeal determined that it would be more appropriately to come before the city council because the city council had issued the original...
Because we gave the special permit. Therefore, you're asking for a change in a special permit to accommodate the changes in the volume of rooms. Therefore, changing also the dynamic of your parking in order to accommodate for the rooms, correct?
Right. And that requires a note...
So that's a change, Tony.
Yeah, a notification to the city council, which is being done here. And it can be voted on according to the ZBA's interpretation at this meeting. In fact, from our point of view, from the city's development point of view, we would hope that could be done because the scheduling of construction between the residential and the hotel phase of this project are important to be coordinated. And this would allow that to happen.
Ma'am, correct me if I'm wrong. Were you at one time the consultant regarding this project for the hotel portion? Is that correct?
I'm one of the owners of the hotel.
Okay. That's what I want to concur. Because I remember being at the police station and you getting up, speaking, saying, you know, basically that you were at that time a consultant to the project and that you were the hotel part of the project.
I was there representing the hotel part of the project.
Perfect. I just wanted to recollect. One of the issues that Counselor McKenna had, which troubles me right now, is we shouldn't have to wait to have the fence put up around the creek right now. It should be done simultaneously as they're building that building. I can't see why that couldn't be done the second that you had a shovel in the ground. It's a simple thing. It's, matter of fact, it should have been the first thing because of, it's an area of critical concern. So if tomorrow you can get someone to put a fence up, I'm sure with the 300 workers that are down there, someone can put a fence up. And that should be done expeditiously, I would hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Isambro?
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I look at this and, as I do all projects, I look at the pros and cons. And the pros far outweigh the cons in this. I know my colleagues to my right may disagree with that, but I should be one with a resentment that should be voting again. It should be, if I didn't do what's best for the city, one of the developers has been spreading rumors that I downsized the project so much that I cost them money and that they'll never come to Revere again. And I heard a lot of stories. So I should be one that comes at this negatively, but I can't from the point of view of what the project's change is. Now, I want to make one thing clear. What's not changing is the restrictions that I insisted on when I decided to vote for the original project. And that was the residential side is already taken care of. The 30 rooms were taken off and the money for Donnelly Square is there. And the language that the hotel can never be anything but a hotel is not changing. What is changing is, and I think one of my colleagues mentioned that they had concerns about the extended stay portion of, that there was 132 keys of extended stay. That was one of the reasons I put the language in, to be frank, because there's kitchens and that was, that's why I needed that language. But to bring it now to 80 extended stay and 80 hotel rooms, I am thrilled. I'm thrilled for the room tax. I'm thrilled that the project's going to be a lot nicer than it was before. And that's what I mean by the pros and cons. The 80 and 80 is certainly much better than 132 keys of extended stay. So this, you know, this is definitely an improvement in the project. And I think the minimal reduction in parking, and one could easily say, if you looked at it realistically, that you need less parking with the way this has been configured now. With the, most of those people in their 80 rooms of regular hotel rooms, they're not going to have vehicles. They're going to taxi, Uber, whatever, limousine. They're going to come and be dropped off there. And so you might get a few cars in the extended stay because even people that are just here for a week or so, they'll rent a car. So you'll need cars. So again, I'm a guy that if I was not thinking about the best interests of the city, would be resentful at someone besmirching my reputation or someone saying that I stuck them up and cost them money or whatever, you know? And I'm completely transparent. I, you know, I've told that story a lot, that I was not happy that I thought I made the project better and in fact saved the project from being built. And then I took abuse for it. And I don't like that. But the bottom line is your project now, and I know your reputation. I know your projects. I know your hotels. And I am completely comfortable supporting this change because it is, in fact, good for the city. So I will certainly support it. I believe we're going to vote on this tonight, and I'm going to support it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. If I may ask one question before we continue on, and I know my colleagues have questions too, but I think it's important because I want to clarify something. So my communication says there are three basic changes differentiating this proposal from the special permit that was granted. Number one is 132 rooms to 160. Number two is the reduction in parking from .5 to .438, which is about .33 of a difference. And the reduction in the front yard setback from 20 feet to 12 feet, 4 inches, which is about seven and a half feet of a difference. So those are the three changes. So when you say that there isn't a difference in the setback, it's the length of the building. I'm confused as to when they say front yard setback versus the length of the building. That's just not, I'm having a hard time understanding.
The setback approved under the PUD for the, the first time it was approved was only for the configuration of the building as it stood. So in other words, the setback was not relevant past the length of the building. When the building was lengthened, then it raised the setback issue again for the lengthened portion of the building. So for that 20 feet, it requires approval of a setback similar to what had previously been approved for the entire rest of the building.
If I can explain it, Madam President?
Counselor, maybe? Yes.
The setback was already there for the existing building that was going to be built. All this is doing is extending the same thing that was approved in the original permit.
For the 20 feet over there.
For the 20 more feet of the building.
Madam President, just to kind of give you a configuration view, the property is curved.
That answers the question.
It's not a square building.
That answers the question.
I mean, a square property. The building is square. So when they extended the building, it came closer to the bends.
Yes. So if it's 20 feet in the middle, it could be 12 feet on the edges or...
Right. And it's on the Revere Beach Parkway side is the 12 feet.
Yes.
Okay. And then on the back part by number one Elliott Road, where the fence, near where the fence is going, is the other point. And the parking, it's not necessarily the parking itself, but it's the parking ratio.
Yes.
That's in question. It's not a question, but that's being changed.
Understood.
Because of the amount of rooms.
Yep.
You know, and the reduction. But the parking spaces, did you say it's four additional spaces or four underneath?
There's four additional spaces to when the project was permitted in the first PUD approval. And that was by improving the circulation under the building.
Right. So that, you know, that ratio change with these four makes that 4.38.
Eight.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure we were clear on the three changes we were discussing before I opened it up to everyone else. Because if I was a little confused, I wasn't sure if anyone else was having that same moment. Counselor Noposowski?
Thank you. And realize too, you just answered one of my questions, so thank you. Realize too that we're not voting on the changes, if I'm correct. We're voting on allowing them to move to the ZBA to make those changes happen.
That's not true.
Because they have...
We're voting on all things.
Then why are they...
We're voting on modifications to the special permit.
Modifications to the special permit, okay. But they still have to approve these, the variances?
I believe if it's approved at the city council, it will no longer require ZBA.
So the ZBA bounced it back to us since we were the issuers of the special permit.
Okay. Okay. Then I stand corrected. Yeah, no problem. But, you know, having seen the plans, knowing the site, which I go on maybe once a week, I think it's important that we let them go, not only to allow them to expand and reduce the number of extended stays, but to realize that this is going to be additional income to the city. Not only are we going to get mitigation funds into the mitigation trust fund of the city, but we're going to be getting additional room surcharges for the additional hotel rooms. And that's what I think, what $10 a night, something like that. So I am for this. The neighbors contacted me about the fence. And Counselor Rotendo, they weren't concerned about the immediate adding to that fence right away. Because I'm just afraid that if they put the fence up with all the debris flying all over the place during the construction, they're not concerned with it now. They're concerned with the final package once it happens. And there will be gates, access gates, along the new fence that goes all the way from the end of the old Shaw's site at the Parkway where the ditch, the creek, goes all the way to North Shore Road. There will be a light restriction fence. But there will be gates. I met with the superintendent down there a couple of weeks ago. We picked out the locations where these gates would be, near the headers of the pipe at both ends, a couple in the middle. And there will be a gate above the header wall of the pipe going on the North Shore Road. So, and they'll be able to access that to clean out the rack, the trash rack down below. So we were up on that. And I would not, honestly, Counselor, I wouldn't insist on that fence going up right away. So thank you for your concerns.
Thank you.
Madam President, just as a point of inquiry, because the Counselor just said there's mitigation money. Is there extra mitigation money coming to the city as a result of this?
Yes.
Was that put into the letter here? So how much mitigation money is being...
It depends on the final calculation of the cost of the building, but it makes that a lot of difference.
Okay. And you're saying that the building is going to be curved, so the 12-foot setback...
The building is straight.
If you just address the microphone, because the people at home can see you, but they can't hear you.
Because I thought he said it was a curved building.
Yes.
The property, the building is straight.
The property is curved.
The property curved.
So, but just please, you know, to follow up on the Council President's question. So if somebody comes in with a document and the ZBA says, "Yes, we're going to give you a setback," they can just arbitrarily say, "Well, I'm going to add another, you know, 40 feet without having to get another variance?" I mean, they can just add on to the building because they got a variance on what they already had? They don't need a variance?
No. In this case, the project was approved as a special permit, planned unit development. It didn't require ZBA approval in the first instance. They went back to the ZBA for this additional section of the building. And the ZBA referred them back to the city council because you approved the first special permit.
For the original booty showing body.
So this project never went to the ZBA. It only came to the council.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselors. Counselor Rotendo quickly and then Counselor Patch.
Since we're going to get an extra $100,000 for mitigation, can we give $6,000 to Safe Saturdays? That's something that, you know, the council have voted up to have the mayor provide for Safe Saturdays, which is paying the janitors at the high school.
Counselor.
I know. I couldn't help myself.
Point taken. Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Madam President. As you know, I didn't vote for the original Shaw's project. I thought it was too big for the site. And now you want to make it bigger. And I have, that's the, the most complaints I get from people is the same thing. They go by there, "Wow, that's huge." So I'm not going to, I'm going to stay with my no vote. And because I just, I just, I see this happen, like Counselor Rizzo said, you know, people come back and they want to do additions. They want to do that. I just don't go for that. So I'm going to vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors wishing to speak? Madam Clark will call the roll. Shall the city council approve...
I can wait here patiently. I want to just know what's happening.
You have to, you have to press forward if you're going to speak.
How much further do I have to get?
I couldn't come to the mic unless I knocked her over and that would look poorly on my neighborhood. Jan Dumas, 51st Wallen Avenue. Just a reminder, when we went through this two years ago, you asked this developer to promise that they would not come back to the city council when they were in the midst of building and ask for an extension. And here we are. They're almost done building. It's already bigger than I think we were told in the first place. And now we're asking for another extension. We're asking for, they are asking for 34 new units. How much bigger is this building going to be? Are we going to add another floor? Are we going to take away more parking? They promised us two years ago they wouldn't do this and here we are. So please, you made them promise two years ago not to come back and ask for more. Thank you very much, Counselor Patch, for doing that. I really appreciate it as someone who lives in the neighborhood. But you promised two years ago you weren't going to do this and here you are. But you promised two years ago you weren't gonna do this, and here you are. Neelix is more honest than that. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
I just want to say one thing.
Counselor Morbido.
I wasn't gonna speak, but I'm gonna say something before I take my vote. Everything about this communication coming before the City Council benefits the city in the sense because they're increasing the amount of hotel units, which means we get a, the city gets income per unit. And we are, I'm not sure if you're aware, but we're very close to Boston, where that's not even a two-minute walk from the train station. Most people who go to a hotel are gonna be taking the train from the airport stop to the Beauchamp stop. It's logical. If anyone who is saying that you're gonna have more traffic in and out because they're increasing the hotel units is fear mongering. Basically, that's what it is. And the way I look at it, you have Market Basket, who everyone was in support of, more traffic comes in and out of that parking lot in an hour than there would be coming out of that hotel at Shaw's property.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm just gonna ask one question, if I may, because that made me think of something. Is there a difference in the overall square footage in the original plan and this plan? What is the total volume in square feet?
It is, roughly, roughly, it's 21 times... It's about 21 times 60 times 4. So it's 20 feet long by about 60 wide, and it's only four floors.
So just under, yeah, around 1,200, 1,300, but that's not a huge, the actual footprint of the building. Understood.
But the footprint of the, the footprint change is 21 by 60, and it changes on four floors, not on the ground floor.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, seeing in there, understood.
Can, what was the change?
1,200 square feet of built space.
Shall the City Council approve the new site plan by JAL Hospitality Design LLC dated December 13, 2017, for PUD 16-01, 245 Revere Beach Parkway, which includes the following amendments? Increase in number of hotel rooms from 132 to 160, and a reduction in parking ratio from .5 to .438. Counsel Gwinasso.
No.
No. Counselor Keefe.
No.
No. Counsel McKenna.
No.
No. Counsel Morbido.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Patch.
Nope.
No. Counsel Powers?
No.
No. Counsel Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the, it fails.
Motion to reconsider?
Suspension of rules, all in favor, all opposed? On reconsideration? Would you like the roll called on that?
Suspension of rules?
Yes. Sorry, suspension of rules was approved, then reconsideration, roll call.
Roll call and reconsideration. Shall the matter be reconsidered? Counsel Gwinasso?
No.
No. Counsel Keefe?
No.
No. Counsel McKenna?
No.
No. Counsel Morbido?
No.
No. Counsel Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Patch?
No.
No. Counsel Powers?
No.
No. Counsel Rizzo?
Yes.
No. Counsel Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Janino?
No.
No, reconsideration fails.
Next item on the agenda.
Calendar item number 24, motion presented by Counsel Rotundo, that the mayor request the Director of the Revere Housing Authority to appear before the City Council regarding Section 8 and the current status and condition of the properties within its portfolio.
Counsel Rotundo.
Thank you. That, and I will address him when he's here or her, regarding another issue that has come to my attention about they're trying to evict one person, which I'm pretty upset about. But with that said, I would like to know, I've seen video after video of rats in the area, and recently regarding the Section 8 vouchers, I was told that several people have been denied, and I'd like to find out what's the status of the funding for that and why certain people are being denied and other people are not. Thank you.
Any other Counselors? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 25, motion presented by Counsel Gwinasso, that the mayor include the entire length of Rumney Road on the capital improvement plan for repaving.
Madam President, I'm aware that the, under the capital improvement program, that we are scheduled to have Rumney Road paved and sidewalks from Broadway to Graves Road. And I very much appreciate the fact that that is in place, and that's gonna happen this year, I believe. But after you go beyond Graves Road, Madam President, Rumney Road is one of the most heavily traveled roads in our community, and it's a long time in coming for the repavement of that road. And it doesn't get repaved, Madam President, based on the fact of the length and size of it. So that is so unfair, based on the fact that it's so heavily traveled that the residents who live there are bearing the brunt of this on a daily basis, and they're being punished because this, their road is so traveled. And I think it's about time that we put pressure on the mayor and the administration to do the entire length. Again, I appreciate the fact that we're going to do from Broadway to Graves Road, but that's only gonna add insult to injury to the rest of the neighborhood who live on Rumney Road. And they're gonna say inadequately so, what about me? And I just beg and implore that the mayor and his staff add the entire length to the capital improvement program this year. Thank you, Madam President.
Counsel Patch.
Thank you, Madam President. A very good motion there, Counsel Gwinasso, seeing that Rumney Road runs into Ward 6. And I think I was, I kinda was short-changed this year a little bit, but, and we'd like to see, if they're gonna do a bit of Rumney, they should do the whole street of Rumney Road. Thank you.
Any other Counselors? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 26, motion presented by Counsel Keefe, that the mayor request the Board of Health to partner with regional agencies to inspect, inform, and educate local businesses in regards to the laws on selling tobacco products and vape devices and/or oil cartridges and refills to minors.
Counsel Keefe.
Thank you, Madam President. This sort of came to my attention recently in regards to, and I won't name the business because, you know, I feel very strongly about innocent until proven guilty. One of my neighbors told me, he said, hey, you know, the place on Broadway around the corner from us is selling Lucy's. And I said, really? You know, I thought, I mean, that's totally outdated. And then he explained to me how common it is, and they're very blatant. And then I heard it from a few other kids. I have young kids, a high school-aged daughter. I know fellow Counsel Rotundo has a few daughters in high school as well. And now we're hearing about this, these Jews, these Jules vaping devices, and they're all over school. They're the size of a flash drive in the kids' pockets. I mean, I was a kid once, and we all did stupid things, but the access to some of these ingredients or some of these devices, apparently, some Revere businesses is becoming very easy to minors, children under 18. Again, I'm not gonna name the businesses, I have reported them to our Inspection Service Department, but I'm asking that between the Inspection Service Department, Board of Health, and of course, any of our federal and/or state oversight, to get a little bit more involved, not only going in and having some sort of a sting operation to make sure that this isn't happening, and/or to target businesses that may be doing this and selling to minors and distributing the oils or whatever it may be, but also to educate. We have programs in the city, like Revere Kears and other outlets in the city that can go into our businesses that may not know that they're breaking the law, and help them to understand that this isn't acceptable. And obviously, I wanna see harsh penalties when this is happening. I take it personally, of course, I do have, I do have a 14 and a 12-year-old kid, so I know that it's not, it's something that they're gonna be exposed to, they're gonna be exposed to many things in lives. But I just don't want it to be that easy. Like, we all know, if it's easy, then they're gonna, they're gonna eventually have more access to it, and it's gonna continue to happen. But it's becoming a little bit of a, I wouldn't say an epidemic, but rumor has it that a lot of kids have these in their pockets in the school, and they're turning, they're going from classroom to classroom and vaping in the hallway. It's really upsetting to me, so I wanna make sure that we're making this as hard as possible, and we have to do our part in our city to make sure that this isn't happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to add just a little more education about these Jules. They're the size of a flash drive, and you can recharge them. Kids, what they're doing in classroom is they're putting it under their shirt, okay? And they're taking, and they're vaping under their shirt in a classroom. So it's becoming a very gigantic problem, and we need to stop it before it becomes an epidemic. And we're talking about 5th grade, 4th grade, 6th grade, so we're talking about very young kids, and they're doing it right in the classroom. They're not doing it in the halls, they're doing it in the classroom, right under their T-shirt. So we have to address this now, people. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Rotundo, and then Counsel Patch.
So this is clearly an issue of education, but it solely isn't the use of tobacco. They're getting synthetic marijuana, and they're doing that too. This needs to go to the family. We can educate everybody you want at the high school and the middle school level. Needs to be a letter sent out to the parents, telling them what's going on, telling them what to look for. Is your child doing this? Do you know your child may be doing that? It needs to start there, and then it can work backwards to the school, because if we don't start at the house, it doesn't matter what you do at the school, they're only there for a certain period of time, and if the parents can't be a part of the process, we've just lost half the fight. Thank you.
Counsel Patch.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanna thank Counsel Keefe and Counsel McKenna for educating me tonight. This is the first time I've heard this. I guess I'm behind the, get too old, I don't know. But, but one thing that I hope is still the same is school discipline. I mean, if kids are caught with these, I mean, I'm hoping that they at least call it, for the younger ones, call their parents in, and for the older ones, they should suspend them. And, and they gotta, I mean, the kids can't run to school, I mean, you're gonna, they gotta have some discipline. I mean, I had nuns for 12 years, so I had discipline. But I know it's changed a lot, and, you know, there's a lot of PC going on, but they gotta get back to the roots, they gotta, they gotta get more control. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Sure, Counsel.
Thank you, I'm sorry to say, speak twice, because I usually don't do that, but I just wanna say that the state's requirements for suspending kids right now is so difficult, they don't, they shun upon suspensions. They wanna keep the kids in school. So it's so hard for these educators and these administrators, if something happens, to really suspend the kids. So maybe we need to talk to our state legislature and see if we can, you know, fix this, because it really is difficult for the schools to suspend now, so.
Can they confiscate the vapors?
They can confiscate the vapors, definitely, and they probably could give them an in-house suspension or a couple of sessions, but suspension is not in the books anymore like we were when we were kids, so.
Thank you, Counselor McKenna. And if I may speak on this briefly, I think that this is a really great point made by my colleagues, and I think that this is an issue that is new to this generation. I think that in my colleagues' generation, you know, everyone smoked in high school, and smoking was really big. In my generation, there was so much education around smoking in the classroom. I can remember Mr. D coming into my classroom with a cigarette and a coffee filter, showing the kids how bad it was for you, so I think my generation had a lot more education on that, and because of that, less people smoked. The problem with these e-cigarettes and vapes and the electronic cigarettes are, is they're marketed to adults as a healthy alternative to quit smoking, but kids are getting the message that it's healthy. They're not getting that, the middle ground of, you know, if you're an adult that's smoking three packs of cigarettes a day, this might be a better option for you to quit smoking. But if you're a 12-year-old or 13-year-old or a 14-year-old that's never touched a cigarette, it is not healthy, it's not safe, just because it's not hot, you don't light it, you know, there's that, there's a difference in texture and context that I think kids are missing, because, you know, cigarettes marketed as bad, but this is just, it's vapor, it's steam, it's cool. They don't, they don't have that negative connotation with it, and I think that's what's missing. So I think that if we focus on education and really getting that across, and I think getting parents and grandparents educated on it as well is huge, because like Counsel Patch said, you know, you have several grandkids that will be seeing these in their friend group within the next five or six years. It's huge that we, as a community, become educated on it, so we can teach the next generations the realities of it, and that it's not safe. So, great, great motion.
On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 27, motion presented by Counsel Powers, that the mayor request Clear Channel to repair and/or replace the gate on the southbound side of Route 1A at Clear Channel's billboard location between Oak Island and Revere Street. If left unabated, this could become a potential dumping site, and Counsel Zambudo is being, is recused from this motion.
Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a very simple matter, that a communication go to Clear Channel, that they come down here to the city and either repair or replace the fence that's there. It's on 1A in the southbound lane, somewhere between Oak Island and Revere Street, and what it does, it gives Clear Channel access to their billboard, and that's fine, if there's a billboard there, they should have access to it. However, it shouldn't be left open so that anybody can arbitrarily drive by there, pull the pickup truck or whatever they might have in there and dump some material and just cause a little more blight in our city. Thank you, Madam President.
Anyone else? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 28, motion presented by Counselors Rizzo, Patch, and Janino, that the mayor request a meeting with our state delegation, representatives from DCR and Mastaut, DPW Superintendent Donnie Goodwin, Water and Sewer Foreman Joe Maglione, and Mr. Rocco Falzone of 55 Tuscano Ave, to discuss a long-term plan to address flooding issues affecting dozens of homes in the Asti and Tuscano Avenues area. This meeting should include a walkthrough of the impacted area.
Thank you, Madam Clark. I know there are residents that wish to speak. I'm gonna start with Counsel Rizzo, followed by Counsel Patch. We'll open it up to the Council, and then anyone that wishes to speak.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I know there was a subcommittee meeting, a public works subcommittee meeting, where Mr. Falzone, who's been advocating for his neighborhood now for close to 20 years, maybe a little over that, was able to attend and talk about the issues down there that he's been dealing with, and I think after talking with some of my colleagues, particularly those of you that are co-sponsoring the motion with me, we know that we've had conversations with Mr. Falzone, and that, you know, his concerns are real and valid, because he's lived it. That area used to get incredibly impacted during the high water, major storm events. And so every time that we get any kind of heavy precipitation, he, rightfully so, goes into a panic mode and wants to go down there and take personal control over the situation. I don't think it's a good, I don't think it's a good situation, first of all, to put Mr. Falzone in, second of all, to put that neighborhood in. I mean, if Mr. Falzone wanted to, he could probably pack up and leave and move somewhere else if he wanted to. We're still leaving that situation the way it is. So it needs to be addressed, I think, once and for all, and I don't necessarily know that it's gonna be addressed here at the City Council, and the purpose of my motion, to solve it, I think, in this council chamber. What I'd like to do is to go down to his neighborhood with the appropriate people and actually get hands-on, like, get into what are the problems and how can we solve it? Because, you know, I mean, I know we've talked about it up here and, you know, I'm sure it's frustrating for Mr. Falzone to come up here and, you know, he put together a great package that I ultimately got when I, you know, after, you know, subsequent to the public works meeting, but, so, I mean, clearly, any of you who have looked at that package, and I see, I see, I see a couple of counselors over the other side that actually have the package, he's put a lot of time and effort into that. And I just think that if we can get the appropriate people, including our state delegation, where I think it really has to come from, and get down into that neighborhood and actually, you know, let's identify steps that need to be taken to address this and, you know, satisfy, not only satisfy Mr. Falzone, satisfy what's right for that area down there on Asti Ave and Tuscano and that whole surrounding, you know, Green Tree Lane and so on. We need to come up with a solution to that so he doesn't have to run out of his house every time we get a rainstorm to try to make sure that he does what he can to salvage that neighborhood. So, hopefully, this is something that can be put together after this meeting. We can come up with a time and a date to meet down there and do a walkthrough. That would be my goal in this. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Madam President. As you can see, this is the folder that Mr. Falzone had put together. He put a lot of work and effort into it, and he's been fighting the fight for a long time. And it's getting to a point where the city has been doing a much better job, much better, the last few years down there. But again, the problem is with the state. The state don't, that colored system goes back to several cities and it just, it needs a complete workover. And they're getting, they're getting, the city, the DBW are getting a little, they're concerned about Mr. Falzone. He's getting along on age a little bit like I am, and the, they, they thinks, they just don't think he's up to taking care of that anymore, which he shouldn't be taking care of it anyway. So the city has been doing a good job taking care of that the last few years. We haven't had flooding there in the last couple of years. Some of that is because Mr. Falzone cleans the entranceway once in a while. But they also, they keep an eye on it, the last storm, there was no flooding down there, the real, the real bad one we had, and they were going by it every 45 minutes. So, I think this is a good idea, we get, especially get DART and the state down there to show them what the problem really is. But I don't think, I don't think they actually come down to Riviera part of it. So, again, we, I hope we have some success with this, but Mr. Falzone will tell you that we don't have much success with the state. Thank you.
Thank you to my colleagues. I think this is a great motion and I'm happy to be a part of it. Are there any other counselors that have any questions before we open it up? Anyone wishing to speak? Mr. Falzone? From which I must say, while he's walking up to the podium, he spent a great deal of time and effort assembling 11 custom packets for all of us with all the information, so thank you for your commitment.
Thank you. First of all, Charlie Patch, thank you. Counselor Rizzo. Let me applaud you, and let me tell you why. 28 years in this nightmare of mine, finally, it's falling on somebody's ears to pay attention, and I really, really appreciate that. And also, I have some members here from Asti Ave, they also come up. My wife and I walked down to Asti Ave, we signed, we started a partition to get this work done. Is it a question of when it's going to happen, but right now, I explain the past, the present, and the future. I cannot move from the past because there's still things that are unsolved that we're trying to get. The motion that Mr. Rizzo had said, that that's the beginning of a start. And also, Genie, on my packet, there's a few other people that forgot to mention. Army Corps of Engineers, that's in my packet, his name is Christopher Hatfield, DOT Peter Colletti, and the EPA, he was a fellow named Tim Donahue, I think. Well, they're all in the packet. Before I go any further, I would like to acknowledge Counselor Zambudo, Counselor Rotundo, Counselor Keith, and Counselor McKenna. When I first came up here last year, I was sitting at the podium, and Counselor Mary Beard, you come up to me and you said, "Can I help you?" You did. "I'm asking for your help." I would like to join Counselor Rizzo, Counselor Patch, in my plea to get, to get the place kind of fixed up to the point. I was also informed that Counselor Mary Beard, you're liaison between the state and the city Riviera.
That's Counselor Zambudo, that's Counselor Mary Beard.
Counselor Zambudo, I'm sorry. I understand.
Listen, I support you wholeheartedly, but I, you're going to get me, you're going to get me in trouble.
I mean, they're both Italian, but...
Counselor Zambudo is recused from this motion because he works for the state, so he can't speak on it or be a part of it.
I can't discuss this. I can't, I can't discuss this because of my position at the state, but you're going about this the right way. That's all I can tell you.
Thank you, thank you. Counselor Rotundo, you made a comment, I think it was last year, about city governments for other people and by other people. I like that an awful lot. So in my situation that I'm in, I'm just one of that people. I'm one number of that people. Everybody on that panel, there's a bunch of numbers that put all you people up there in strength. Numbers mean strength, and you're all up there because of those numbers. Me being here as one number, I'm asking for your help, I'm pleading for your help to go with Mr. Counselor Rizzo, Counselor Patch, and everybody that's on the committee, to stay with these guys to help out my, my problem. And then, it's one large number, and one large number will mean an awful lot for the people on Tuscano and Asti, as well as fixing the problem. A few other points. From Sergeant Street South, there's primo property, it's mega bucks, West Riviera. From Sergeant Street North, including Asti Ave up to Malden Street, Malden Street down to that trash gates, hasn't been touched in 50 years that I've been there. Not only the debris that's on Asti Ave, that's another story for another day, but because of where it hasn't been touched in 50 years, those fragments grow. Again, I'm going to repeat myself, we all know what that's all about. For the time that I do have left, I just want to make one more point. Being the fact, when we get down with all these people that are coming down there, Danny, I'm going to have to make it a point to make them understand, it's not a one-shot deal. It has to be maintained forever, because I'm up here now, and if I stop coming up here, it's going to fall back the way it did 28 years ago. But I'm also going to suggest, Counselor Patch, I hear you, you want to put up a sound barrier? And how far did you get with that, or you're still working on that?
No, that's out of the, as far as I know, that's out of the, they, they had the money there, they passed it on to somebody else, and it's, they're not going to look into it again until like, I think it was 2030.
2030, I'll be dead and buried, which I think we all will be. But if I can make one point of interest, being the fact, like I went numbers, if you have a lot of numbers to support your cause, you think maybe that might work?
I, to be honest with you, with the state, I, I think, for some reason, you know, I'm not the only, I tried to, I put that in motion in about maybe 11 years, I think, three times. And I think before me, the counselors, the wide six counselors before me put the same motion in, and I think some of the councilor lodge had put that motion in. And they keep, for some reason, they're saying that that road there, Route 1 going through Sargus, is not a highway or a, what do they call it, like a 93 or a 95 or whatever.
Point taken.
So, they, it doesn't qualify for a sound barrier. So I guess if you're in Linfield, you can get one like 93 or 90, you know, I don't know, 128. But I think it's, I think it's wrong what they're doing, you know, but we got the wrong lobbyist. I don't know what to tell you.
Okay. Well, I got a point of interest. I'm sure we all have gone down to 128, 95, 93, and you go 495, you go down 495, up to where you see sound barriers. Behind the sound barriers, what do you see? Trees, no homes, no nothing. Like you said, lobbyists mean going a long, long way with name recognition. That's how that works. So here it is, what they told you, I think that more or less they're kind of pacifying everybody. You had them come down and talk to the people on Asti Ave, Caruso Court, Green Tree Lane. My house used to be white, now it's all black. So, I mean, there's an issue there that we can argue. That's for another day. Another thing I want to say, I also forgot to mention one key person, the state delegation, Rosalie Vincent. Let me tell you what happened. At my subcommittee, I, my counselor, Laviskowski, suggested get the state delegation, and on behold, I made a phone call, and it happened to be she was coming to Riviera that Friday. And we had made an appointment, she came down Monday with her husband, we walked through, and she could not believe what she seen. Forget the, she didn't even see my package yet. She just walked up and down Asti Ave, and it was just terrible. That hasn't been touched in 50 years, and it's unacceptable, as far as she was concerned. But let me tell you what happened after that. A week later, guess who showed up on expressway? DOT! Though Mr. Nick Colletti must have paid attention to Rosalie Vincent. Again, name recognition goes a long way, and there's a perfect example. So they started Saturday morning, it must have been around 6 o'clock in the morning, I get out there, they were still there, they cleaned up half the thing and never came back. Today, there was the prisoners on expressway, they were there for, God is my judge, 20 minutes, a half an hour, and they were gone, never seen them again. I think if they picked up three or four pieces of paper, they were kind of fortunate, but they're gone. We know the area, people on Asti Ave know the area, Tuscano, Danny knows the area, Charlie, you're right around the corner from there. We know how it is. And the only reason why I'm up here is because I've got a health problem. Do you think I want to come up here and disclose this all over Riviera? My house was worth $400,000. I can imagine what it's going to be because of the problems down there, which is unfair. I don't think it's fair. But because of the situation, my back's against the wall and I have to present it one more time. So I'm losing, no matter how I win, I'm still losing because I'm disclosing where I live for the problem for 28 years, but I have to say what I have to say. And so, that's, that's my point. Another thing, Counselor McKenna, subcommittee, the only one that was here, God bless you, she answered my phone call, I could not believe it. Not even in my ward, she picked up the phone and answered it, and I thought that was very nice. She had enough problems down in her own ward, but then she took the initiative to answer me, called me, and it was just incredible. So, getting back to the numbers, with just one number, all you people have a lot of numbers behind you, and I think it should be spread out. So I'm going to, I know I talk too much. So the past is here, I'm looking for the present, and hopefully, I'm alive for the future. But, Genie, again, thank you. Can I keep, I don't know the rules and regulations, but could I keep it in committee or how's that work?
Yeah, so if we, we have to vote on it tonight to set that meeting up. So if we put it in committee, it won't happen, it'll sit in committee, so we want to execute it, so we're going to vote on it this evening so we can begin the works to get this meeting set up. Of course. Yes, of course.
And, I'm sorry, there's one more point. Danny, I would like to have a police escort, and let me tell you why. I'm already getting phone calls that they better shut my mouth. I don't know where it's coming from, but if I could find something to put on my phone to get these people, then that's a whole nother story. But on the other hand, the reason why I want the police escort, not because of that, there might be a lot of people coming out of Asti Ave, Tuscano, to walk with us and voice their opinion.
Sure, we'll add that as well.
Thanks again, guys.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Asti Ave.
Thank you. Hi. We know it's been a long evening and we don't want to take up a lot of time, but we would appreciate just a few minutes. This is my mother, Josephine Hedrington. I'm Lisa Hedrington, we live at 102 Asti Ave, directly across the street from the Calvin in question.
I've been there 49 years and I know this has been ongoing. You know, we have been flooded, we have lost everything in our basement, the time the street was flooded and had to evacuate, but it's been back up, back up with waste in our bathroom downstairs, you know.
The point to understand is that it isn't just water. It's human waste that comes in through the tubs and through the toilets, it's raw sewer, so everything that it touches is contaminated. If it was your families, you would want something done about it. The point that you made, Counselor Patch, about it being better in the last few years, I'm sorry to say, in the past few years, that's not true. We've received, after the flood of 96, we, the reason the whole entire street was flooded, they took people out in boats, and we had five feet of water in our basement, our lower level. And then after that, the city never came by, the state took a rake from the overpass that's in front of our house and cleared the drain with the rake, and the whole street receded, okay?
Actually, actually, at that time, there was a neighbor who went in, George, remember? To clear that out.
Somebody had attempted to clear it, but it shouldn't be the issue of the residents on the street. Rocco takes to full rubber gear, boots, and goes over there, and the times that I've gotten water is because he cleared it, that it was at minimum, that it's been at bay. My mother's taken steps to add additional drainage to our home, but she's lived there for 49 years, she doesn't want to move, and she shouldn't have to. So the thing to drive home is that it's not water. Water's one thing, or a basement, you can dry it out. These are bedrooms, you know, homes, items that are contaminated, so, you know, and it's happened repeatedly, to myself and to, we've lost plenty of things over the years, so it's something to take very seriously, and he shouldn't have to go in there at his age. Now there's a lock on the gate, but prior to that, we live right across the street. Kids are in there drinking, dogs are in there messing, loose dogs, okay? Kids go in there and do drugs and you find little needles, so I don't know who put the lock on it, we don't know, but.
They did, they put the lock.
Cars stopped in front of our house, and that was there, so it's been a nice deterrent, that piece of it. But after the administration changed that year, nobody came. I called Representative Vincent, within a half an hour, someone was there. And since then, the city has continued to check on it, but.
Never the state, they...
It's never the state, just for cleanup. And so, we just want to make that clear.
We appreciate it.
And we appreciate anything that you can do to, to make it better and have a full cooperation, so, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you guys for taking the time to be here with us this evening.
One more, if I may. Charlie, I have a picture with dates on it.
I saw that.
Did you see it?
I saw that, yes.
Okay. I went down there, it rained two, three weeks ago. I went down Asti Ave, guess what I found in the pit? There was branches. This is the rainy season. That broke loose from somewhere up the creek and it washed down in that rain. Three days later, I found the stick in there. If they come by 45 minutes, guess what's going to happen? It's going to be flooded over again. But I can promise you this, I got the picture with the date on it, next picture I'm going to show you was going to be a massive flood. I hope it doesn't, but I'm going to bring those pictures in.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks again.
On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so ordered. Calendar item number 29, motion presented by councillor Rizzo, that the mayor respond to the following council orders, 18-006, an accounting of outside legal council fees from January 2016 to present, this motion was submitted on January 8th, 2018, council order 18-027, cable provider updates, including Comcast, existing contract, and RCN plans for implementation, this motion was submitted on January 22nd, 2018, council order 18-065, school safety discussion with the city council, this motion was submitted on February 26th, 2018, council order 18-053, fire department staffing and equipment updates, this motion was submitted on February 26th, 2018, council order 18-040, flooding problems on Sagamore Street, this motion was submitted on February 26th, 2018, council, and council order 18-028, relative to tornado repairs and updates on air quality, this motion was submitted on January 22nd, 2018, it has always been the practice of prior administrations to provide information to city councillors in a timely fashion, I'm requesting these motions be addressed within seven days. Councillor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and, you know, it's discouraging that I had to submit a motion like this, but when you ask for information, and the only place you can get it is from the administration, you know, we're handicapped, we had a Ways and Means Committee meeting here tonight, fortunately, I had most of the information that I needed for that, but I can't go forward with future meetings because a lot of this information has not been provided, some of it does not include items relevant to Ways and Means, it has information, or I'm asking for information, relevant to public safety, I just, I just can't imagine why we, why I have to sit here and discuss this, I, I have the unique, I guess, position that I know what's involved in responding to a motion, and you shouldn't have to wait three months for information when you ask for it, I mean, we try to historically get back within, prior to the next council meeting with information that was requested, so I'm just, I'm just hoping, all I want is a show of support from my colleagues, that this information should be provided, and if I have to bring it up again at a future meeting, then we'll cross that bridge, thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, councillor, councillor Otundo.
Thank you, I, I want to reiterate what councillor Rizzo has stated, but this has been an ongoing issue since probably the second month I come to office, just asking for information, things that I've never had a single mayor, up until this one, deny me information, to the point that I had to go to court to get it, this is, some of it, but this is just problematic, one of them was the assessment center questions, and actually doing some study now, and speaking to several legal scholars, that in fact, the information can provide, be provided to the council under executive session, that it does not constitute a break in executive session, as the material may be used for hiring and for the future development of staff, and therefore, under that guideline, we as a council can observe that information, and it is not breaking of any, any law as far as the executive privileges concerned, but that said, I plan on addressing that at a later date, and I'll be having, obviously, the, the legal scholars that provide me that information, give me the actual document that they sent me, so that said, I just don't know why anybody has to continue to go in these circles, this is the people's information, we paid for it.
Thank you, councillor, any other councillors wishing to speak? Oh, councillor Powers, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam President, most of that I cannot address, but I can't address Sagamore Street, as a matter of fact, we're gonna be going from Dunn Road down to the end, and we're gonna be, and I believe you're aware of this, Pat, because you've been down there, you see the markings and everything, we're gonna be replacing the drainage down there, we're also going to be replacing drainage on Dunn Road, the utility company, National Grid, was down there, they're raising the structures, that's some of the markings you see down there, and once all of that is done, we're also going to be repaving Sagamore Street and Dunn Road and part of the Ponce Street, so, that's what I can answer to with regard to councillor Rizzo's concern, when you mentioned Sagamore Street, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor, seeing as there are no other councillors?
Pat Nakias, Sagamore Street, Revere, that was nice of John to answer councillor Rizzo, but that's not the point, the point is councillor Rizzo is looking for responses from motions from February, and I'm still waiting too, the point is, the mayor does not respond, and I have a letter dated from the city clerk, Ashley Melnick, that says that the mayor has to respond, one way or the other, within 10 days. What, what?
The mayor has to sign the motion, either approve it or veto it, within 10 days, not, not response, no, you said respond.
Okay.
So, if I can clarify quick, and I'll let you continue, anytime a motion is voted on by this council, it goes to the mayor's office, he has 10 days to sign it or veto it.
Correct.
When there's a veto, we're notified, but if it's just signed, we may not be notified if an action is taken, so I think the, the question is regarding a response versus a signature.
Signature, okay, so, he just signs it, and what, files it, and nobody gets to know his signature? Pardon?
Um, Kim, and may I through you, basically, he can sign it or not sign it, but at any rate, the response is very rare that we get in return, in fact, whether he denies something, we don't get in general terms, anything that, for the most part, tells us why he did not respond to it, I would say probably 90% of the time, that's just my opinion.
Okay, so, I don't get it, so why hasn't Rizzo got any response from February, did he get, did he get a signature?
So, if there was a veto, the council would have been notified as a veto, so it would be on the agenda, and we would be notified if a motion was vetoed, however, if a motion is just signed...
I understand the whole thing, if it's, if it's, if it's okayed, then he can sit on it indefinitely, if it's okay.
Well, I'm not gonna make any accusations, we don't know the status of where a motion went.
So, I just want to know, he's got 10 days to sign it, where does it go?
Madam President?
At that point, a motion can either be referred to the, a department head, it can be referred to Public Works, it can go, it can go anywhere.
But not to the councilman who actually brought it to the council?
That's at the discretion of the administration, where, who they inform when they sign a motion, I know councillor Rizzo was a former mayor, so I'm sure he can speak to it, if you send an example, say, for example, councillor Powers puts in a pothole, okay?
Yeah.
If it gets approved, and the mayor says, yep, we're gonna send this to Donny Goodwin in the Department of Public Works.
And Donny Goodwin, and, and it could take eight months to get done, I get that.
He may receive it, but that doesn't mean that councillor Powers is copied in that assignment, if you will, so that's just a clarification.
Madam President, just because you had alluded to it, and just for clarification, so that, you know, Pat, Pat can understand this, because one of the motions here obviously includes, you know, a serious problem that her neighbour is experiencing, and I thank councillor Powers for speaking on it, but, but, but again, I have to hear it from councillor Powers, and it's just not, it's not traditionally how things are done, to answer your question, Pat, yeah, the, you know, he has to sign, and even if he doesn't sign, I think it automatically passes after 10 days, so he, even if he does nothing, the motion is just approved, now where it goes after that...
Really?
Yeah, but where it goes after that...
I realize he can sit on it forever.
Is where the rubber meets the road.
Right.
Where, these councillors put motions in, for whatever it is.
But we voted for Safe Saturdays.
Okay, like, yeah, I mean, like, for example, councillor Otundo put a motion in that the mayor, now we can't, the city council can only cut, right, so we can't expend funds, we can't, we have to request that through the mayor, councillor Otundo puts a motion in, I want to fund $6,000 for Safe Saturdays, if he doesn't want to do it, I don't think anybody, I mean, you know, people may have feelings about that one way or another, but at least let the person know.
Right.
To get no response is just irresponsible, as far as I'm concerned.
It's rude.
We, we, you know, when I put a motion in, it's not just, it's not just to feel good about putting a motion, it's, it's as a result of either a constituent bringing something to my attention, or myself noticing something, or I need information to go forward with a meeting, to not get information for months, and you had said February, but, you know, it's January, January, some of these motions are in, so, it, it, it's unacceptable.
Well, those are the ones I'm concerned about, I...
It's unacceptable, it, there's, there's no rhyme or reason as to why somebody can't respond to simple requests, like how much has been spent by, I mean, this is just one example.
That's the one I want to know about, is the money that's been spent to the outside legal fees.
I think the point's well taken.
I want to know.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President.
I know there are other councillors that wish to speak on it, councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Madam President.
Am I all done?
Pat, can I just, I just want to say something to you, since the administration has changed a little bit here and there, and since they hired Nick Romano, I've gotten feedback on my approvals on my, on my motions in the last two months, so, and I, and I have to say, it's been pretty good to get, you know, well, this was vetoed, and this has been approved, and it does come from Mayor Rigo, but since Nick Romano's been on, we've been getting, I've been getting, I don't know about my other couns, my other fellow councillors, but I have been getting for the last two months.
Because otherwise, wouldn't you feel like this is all fruitless?
Yeah, no, it's, I think it's, it's an administration change.
Because I hear the same old story from you about roads that you would like to see paved in your area.
Oh, definitely.
And Patrick would like to see more safety on Park Ave, and, and Stephen always has issues for the betterment of the city, we hear the same stuff, Wonderland, all the time, all the time, you know, it's the same, George, for, for two years now, he's been asking for the same stuff, it gets, it's sickening to hear the same stuff all the time, and the mayor doesn't even have the courtesy to respond, so, yeah, I want to know about that free cash, with regard to Sagamore Street, I don't know, Goodwin was there when I was there, what he really told us was, it's gonna get worse, not better, it's gonna take $4 million to fix, $40 million to fix.
Pat, for your ratification, that was not Donald Goodwin, okay, that was Donnie Chamarra.
Oh, okay, you said it would be $40 million.
And that was just a number that...
I know.
It's probably gonna cost, realistically, to do that Eastern County ditch, over a million dollars, and I've spoken with Frank Stringy, and that's gonna happen, and that is gonna happen.
And I know, and I feel confident that something will get done in the spring, because, because people cannot go on any longer in that corner, people are getting sick, they're losing business and everything else, it can't go on anymore, so I really feel confident that something's gonna happen.
Well, you, if you recall, I had DPW down there for about 12 hours, pumping that corner.
For Mary Jones, who doesn't say anything, and can't have, closes her, her legal business that she pays for, because nobody can get in her door, every time it rains.
We did have the DPW down there.
Every time it rains.
Okay, we did have the DPW down there, pumping.
No, you did.
Two men down there.
I, I went out there by accident, and I saw them, John, Mary never calls you, you know her, it's hard to say anything.
I know, I know, she doesn't have to call me, if I see it, I try to take care of her.
You know.
So, any other questions?
No, so the point is, I want responses from the mayor, I want, I want to know where the free cash is, I want to know, when George has a question, I want to know what the answer is.
Understood, and I think that, you know, if there's an opportunity to bridge a gap in communication, I think that it's well served, so I hope that we can do that, and I think councillor McKenna made a great point, but I hope that we can resolve that, and again, I think that we want to be in a good place as a city, and have open communication, and resolve anything like that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other councillors, anyone else wishing to speak, on the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 30, motion presented by councillors Morbeto, McKenna, Keefe, Zambudo, and it should also read Janino, that the mayor implement a commemorative bench program, revenue from this program will be used for maintenance of benches throughout the city.
So, Madam Clerk, 30 and 31 are the same motion?
No, so, so 30 and 31, they're similar, so I'm gonna speak once for both of them, and we can do two separate votes.
Understood, two separate votes, okay, councillor Morbeto.
So, a resident came up to me, unfortunately, her mom passed a couple months ago, and they have memories of walking on the beach, and she brought to my attention, you know, is, is there a way we can memorialize my mom's name, you know, she's had a business in Revere for 50 years, she was born here, she loved Revere, is there any way, the process is basically, it would have to go through Legislative Affairs at a state level, because it has to do with DCR, and then they would order it to DCR, and then I was talking to some of my colleagues, and I'm like, you know, not only should we ask our state legislators to talk to DCR and implement a program, we as a city should implement a program where someone can honor a loved one by putting a two-by-four name plaque on a bench throughout the city, and revenue from the, not only is it a nice gesture that someone can be memorialized, someone who does good for the city, or someone who loves their city, but that those, that revenue we receive for that can go toward maintaining the benches throughout the city, and, that's all I have to say.
Great motion, councillor, councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Madam President, so, I think it's a great motion, because there are so many people in the city that are instrumental, and, and they dedicate their time, and they work hard to, for the betterment of the city, and they go unrecognized, so this is a chance to get these people that are instrumental in our city to get recognized with the plaque, and they're nice, they're decorative, they're, they're great looking, Winthrop has it, Lynn has them, it's revenue for the city, so I think it's a great, great start anyways, I mean, there could be conversation with, conversations with this, but I think it's a great start, thank you.
Thank you, councillor McKenna, any other councillors? If I may briefly, councillor Morbeto brought this to my attention, and asked me to be a part of it, and I think it's a great motion, if anyone's walked to your island, you can see all the benches that they have at that location, that's one that stands out in my mind, and it's, it really is beautiful, it fits in with the landscape, it's not anything that's gonna cost the city money, it's gonna benefit the city, so I think it's a great plan, and I look forward to working on this with our state delegation, on that, any other councillors? All right, so we'll do, on the first motion, all in favor, all opposed, so ordered, the second calendar item is to send a letter to the state delegation requesting the DCR to implement this program, any councillors have any questions on this? All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 32, motion presented by councillor Rizzo, that the mayor request the city solicitor in conjunction with the city clerk, to draft an ordinance that mandates and subject state agencies and public utilities the same warnings and fines for graffiti, trash, and other violations that Revere residents are subjected to, there should be fairness when it comes to doling out fines for unchemmed properties, and it should not just be for our own taxpaying residents and businesses.
Councillor.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and the motion essentially speaks for itself, so, you know, a utility, you know, a part of state government, whether it's MBTA, DOT, any of these organizations that don't keep their property up ought to be subjected to the same fines and warnings and things like that that our own residents get, if we're gonna hold our residents to a standard of maintaining their property, whether it's our residential taxpayers, our, our business owners, we should be holding everybody to the same standard, so that's all this motion does, Madam President, is want to hold everybody that controls any type of property throughout the city to the same level of care that one must take to comply with our health and building codes, thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, councillor, any other councillors have any questions, on councillor Rizzo's motion, all in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Madam Clerk, what a personal privilege.
State your point, councillor.
I just wanted to make everyone aware, in the city, on Saturday at 9:00 PM, I'm sorry, 9:00 AM, the Revere Youth Baseball and Softball Organization will have their annual parade, starting at the Susan B. Anthony School, it'll leave there with a fire truck leading the brigade, going to the Griswold, or the formerly, the St. Mary's Ballfields, where they'll have their opening day ceremonies, and tougher news, I just also wanted to, as, on behalf of the city council, wanted to offer my sincere condolences to Priscilla Nickerson, a very active member of our community, she lost her mother on Sunday, and I wanted to send up our condolences, thank you.
And on that, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you.
There is no further business?
Oh. Councilor Powers had given me a communication from Chip Tuttle that he wanted to be right into the record.
Sure. Madam Clerk?
Okay. This is a Wonderland Dog Track demo update dated April 23rd, 2018. This is from Chip Tuttle. As discussed at the DEP meeting in Wilmington, we wanted to provide an updated timeline to the city. Much of the schedule moving forward will be predicated on DEP's inspections, which we are trying to schedule as soon as possible. We will have a more precise calendar for review in the coming days. Wanted to provide this as a starting point. One, per our earlier discussion, we had personnel on site last week to begin assessment of the current conditions and next steps. Two, we received a sign-off on the updated NT plan Friday afternoon from DEP. DEP's conditions, including pre-inspection, are summarized below. In response, we have personnel and equipment on the property today and meetings with the abatement and demo contractors this afternoon. Three, as of this morning, we also started the removal of the existing debris piles on the property as this was a priority for the city and Councilor Powers. This should be completed by the end of the week, if not sooner. Four, as soon as DEP completes its pre-inspection, we are asking DEP for its available dates for this. We can recommence the abatement work, which may take up to three to four months, given the additional scope. We will communicate the date of the DEP pre-abatement inspection as soon as we have it. Five, post-abatement, the final demo and site work is expected to take no longer than two months. In the interest of not wanting to promise deadlines and not meet them, these timeframes are conservative. We can update the city once we're in progress. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Councilor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to give the council and the residents of that area an update. A week and a half ago, I had a meeting in Wilmington with the, part of the owners flew in from New York. We had Chip Tuttle there. We had several members of the DEP staff, also Bob O'Brien and myself. And the conclusion was, when we left the meeting, that they would have a document in our hands by today indicating exactly what was happening. They also agreed that they would have all of that trash out of there by the end of this month and would proceed at that point with the demolition of the clubhouse and the grandstand. And they gave us a tentative date of July 30th for completion of that work. And I feel once that is all out of there, and I'm going to stay, I'm not going to let this go. I want to make sure this does happen and it will happen. The reason they stopped doing the work was because they found asbestos in there in October. And then no one proceeded after that to remove the asbestos to get information from DEP as to what was going to happen down there. But I feel right now that they understand that has to come out of there and that those buildings have to be taken down, and they will be taken down. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilor Rotundo?
No for nothing, but this was foreseen. This was not something that they did not know they did not have. This was known. And quite frankly, it's a bunch of BS. They should have been more active on this process when we asked two years ago. Their foot dragging is disgusting to me. And more importantly, what we need to do is ask our state delegation to go to the DEP and ask them to get themselves in line and move this quickly. They have the ability to do it. They need to prioritize because we are a community that is immensely impacted by every environmental issue in the city, from the airplanes, the traffic in that wheelbarrow site, and now this. The people that live in the, I would say, the breach containment area of this particular neighborhood are going to be affected. Because they cannot tell me that after they've torn down this facility that there is not asbestos that is now flying in the air that is going into the particular atmosphere where people are going to breathe it. So the DEP, recognizing this as an environmentally impacted area, needs to get off their duff and bring themselves down here. If this was the old DMV building that they had in Boston, they were there day and night and they got it done. So for the city of Revere, we can get our state delegation, the Speaker of the House, to knock on their door. Thank you.
Sir, for everyone's information, the DEP has been down here several times. That's why the job was stopped. Initially, the people that were doing the asbestos abatement did a poor job. They didn't outline everything. That's why the DEP came down here. As you know, a lot of plaster down there and the asbestos was used in that plaster. And the people that were at that meeting a week ago, or a week and a half ago, there were six people there from the DEP and they laid the law down very clearly to them, okay? So if anyone's been dragged. Sir, I'm talking, may I?
No. I'm not interested in excuses. I want results.
Sir, if you went by there today and took the time out, you would see results. There were people working down there. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, councilors. Councilor McKenna?
Yes, I'd like to say something, just, they should have encased it. Anytime there's any kind of asbestos that's visible or known, they encase it with plastic, and they didn't do that. So I do blame the DEP or whoever was down there. Because, yes, they did shut down the project, but this was known. And this should have been encased, and it should have been confined. And that's how it should have been done.
Thank you, Counselor. And if I may, in my opinion, it's completely unacceptable. If there was a problem, if they were aware of it in October, it should have been addressed November at the absolute latest. Because if we were, as a city, to have this issue, for example, if anyone can remember, years and years and years ago, the Old Willen School had it. They closed it, the kids went to Lincoln and other schools. The city didn't wait a year to deal with it. So the people that work in our city should be held to the same standards and the same accountability that we as a city hold ourselves to. It's completely unacceptable. And I'm glad we finally got a response, but it is almost a year overdue.
If I can just say one thing. Nick Malason, 143 Lantern Road, I'm the chairman of the Conservation Committee now. I did meet with the contractor a few weeks ago. The day DEP shut him down, DEP will let him do a thing after that. Not even remove the piles that weren't hot with asbestos. So somewhat, George is right. DEP is going to get off their butt.
They've got a safety infringement, that's why they're going to shut them down.
And John says the same thing. We want results and we want answers and we want it done immediately. And with the contractor, did want to remove what he could, but they wouldn't let him do anything. Get off the property and that was it.
Screw you, Madam Chairman. My uncle Frank Homoney, this is what he does. This is exactly what he does. And the first thing that they should have done was contain the affected area. It's the first thing they should have touched. Everything else is secondary. And they knew they had it. They can't say that they didn't know they had it.
They knew the building had asbestos and they knew what they would.
Exactly. And they got shut down until they get a properly trained group in there to do it correctly.